August 2020. Our Chairwoman, Wanda Gunning, is taking what we hope and expect will be a fairly brief medical leave. So as Vice Chair, I'm stepping in to chair tonight's meeting, and I'll start with the opening statement. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 10th day of August 2020. Notice that this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonandj.gov/meetings. Choose the Planning tab to view. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the Raise Hand icon at the bottom center of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the Board will be muted. If you're having difficulty accessing this feature, use the Q&amp;A dialogue box for assistance. So we have a discussion item first, but even before that, I'll ask if anybody has any announcements? Okay, hearing none.
Do we welcome our new member?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Bill Chow is our new alternate member. Welcome. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
Even in a tiny, tiny little rectangle.
I can zoom in if you want. Yeah, it's quite a pleasure, quite an honor to serve for the community. A little background, I grew up in West Windsor. Let's see, mechanical engineer by training, building scientist now. And I've participated with the Princeton Bicycle Advisory Committee since last year. And I've been in Princeton, I don't know, maybe, what is it? I can't, I lost track. Something like 18 years now, so.
Well, it's great. That's wonderful preparation and expertise that you bring. So we're delighted to have you join us here.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm sure you already know this, but while you're not necessarily going to be called on to vote for every last thing, you are welcome and warmly encouraged to obviously pose whatever questions come to mind and chime in anyway, right?
Okay, great. Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is an ordinance referral, Ordinance 2020-28, Definition of Accessory Dwelling Unit. Now, this is an ordinance that the Board is being asked to consider in terms of its...
I can set this up for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
I wanted to, I wanted to put it in the master plan, you know.
I'll take a shot.
Please, please do. And also, I want to note that Trishka Cecil from Mason, Griffin, and Pearson is here to answer technical questions, but we can get to that part a little bit later. Go ahead, Mike. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I'll give an introduction. The Municipal Council has referred to the Planning Board, a draft ordinance, 2020-28 is the ordinance number. What it does is amends the recently adopted accessory dwelling, dwelling unit ordinance, which was numbered 2020-16. That was adopted, 2016 was adopted by the Council on June 29th of this year. The draft ordinance before you this evening basically changes the definition of accessory dwelling units by removing the requirement for the accessory dwelling unit to be owned by the same owner of the principal dwelling unit on that site, on the same site. So our municipal attorney has joined us this evening to give a little more background into the ordinance before you, and then we'll, I'll talk a little bit after that about its compliance with the master plan, which is basically our task this evening, to focus on whether this ordinance is in compliance with the community master plan.
Yeah, if I could just jump in and kind of give, again, we've often done this, but I think the framework and context is important. But what's before us is obviously this ordinance, and the function of the Board is basically to review it for consistency with the master plan and report back to the Council on that. And in fact, in that report, it can include not only judgments about consistency with the master plan, but, as municipal land use law put it, any other matter that the Board deems appropriate. But we should understand in doing this, that this is not the hearing on the ordinance. The hearing on the ordinance is on second reading before Township Council, and that's coming up on the 24th. So this is, while it's important, this is a more limited review than what you're going to have before Council, where that'd be a full-blown discussion of the ordinance and the pros and cons. The question has also come up as to, at least there's one email that's gone around today in terms of raising concerns and objections to the ordinance. The laws that apply when you have a hearing on a development application don't strictly apply. But I, so, we know in that case, if there's a petition that comes in or a writing that's not supported by somebody who's present, you can't hear it. That's not strictly complied, applied, as I said. But I think the underlying rationale is still solid, which is that we really shouldn't be reviewing these things and discussing them outside the context of the meeting because we don't know what one Board member knows and another one doesn't know, and what kind of discussions they had. And the discussion will be much more efficient if we limited our consideration and discussion to the time when we're having the meeting. So I just wanted to put all that on the table. And Trish, I don't know if you want to jump in on that at all?
Sure, thank you. First, I just want to introduce myself, so I know not everybody on this Board may know me. Some of you have known me for an embarrassingly long period of time, such as Louise, who knew me when I was, like, way back when messing everything up. But in any event, I'm Trishka Cecil. I represent, you know, I represent the municipality of Princeton, so I guess I'm corporate. It's unusual for me to be in front of the Board, especially on an ordinance referral, but, you know, this is, this is a really important ordinance to the town, to the Council. And I think certain Council members just wanted me to be here tonight so that I could assist the ordinance and also be available to answer any questions, to the extent that there might be some confusion about what this amendment is doing, and more importantly, what it isn't doing. So I think it's already been explained pretty clearly, but just for the sake of beating a dead horse, the ordinance before you tonight is amending what we call our ADU ordinance, which the Council adopted on June 29th, and put in place, really, I think, a really nice process for increasing the availability of accessory dwelling units throughout town, and making them a permitted use throughout both of the former Prinstons, with a number of, you know, requirements attached to that. At the time that the ordinance was adopted, one of the requirements was that both the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling be owned by the same individual or entity, be under common ownership. And the amendment that's before you tonight is to remove that requirement. I want to emphasize, that's the only thing about the ordinance that's changing. Everything else about the ordinance that was adopted back on June 29th is remaining exactly the same, except for that ownership requirement. As Jerry said, the, what the, what the Council needs the Board to do tonight, and it's such a crucial step, is to review this particular amendment against the master plan, and then to let the Council know if there's anything about the amendment that's inconsistent with the master plan. In addition, if there are any other comments, suggestions, you know, anything else that the Planning Board members feel they want to bring to the Council's attention, that's another vital function. But first and foremost, we need to know, we being the Council, not me, are there any inconsistencies between this ordinance and the Princeton Master Plan? And that is where your role is so crucial. One of the things that I just want to note for the record is that when the original ordinance came before the Planning Board, the Planning Board found that ordinance to be entirely consistent with the master plan. It endorsed it. It had a couple of minor recommendations for some changes to that original ordinance, which made its way. And those recommendations were part of what was eventually adopted. And so tonight, it's really just this one change, whether, which is to allow the accessory dwelling unit and the principal dwelling unit to be under separate ownership. One thing that this change is not doing, and, you know, I have seen some of the emails that have been circulated, there, one of the concerns that I saw is that this change now will, I guess, foster, enable the subdivision, the actual physical subdivision of lots, and placing the ADU on a separate lot. That's not what this amendment is doing. The ordinance still contains the same requirement that it did when it was adopted, which is that for an accessory dwelling unit to meet the definition of an accessory dwelling, it's been located on this unit. That amendment is allow the two units to be independently owned. So with that, I'm going to be quiet. I'm going to let the Board do what it needs to do. The final thing, having just said that, I'm not going to shut up, is, again, just to underscore what your attorney told you, which is that, you know, tonight is about a consistency review under the master plan. There will be a full-blown public hearing before the Council. It's scheduled for next Monday, August 24th. That's not what this is tonight, although obviously I know the Board's practice correctly is to take, you know, and if there are members of the public who wish to speak to the ordinance, I don't want to suggest that's inappropriate, but I do want to just underscore for members of the public, there will be a public hearing on the 24th, and every opportunity to air concerns and, you know, whether positive or negative about the ordinance. Now, I really am going to shut up. Thank you very much.
And I was just, I was, I was just going to bring it back, sort of wrap up the staff portion of this by saying that, in our review of this ordinance, land use staff has concluded that it is, this draft ordinance is in keeping with the goals of the Princeton Community Master Plan, particularly as it encourages, a goal that's stated in our master plan is to encourage opportunities for different types of affordable housing, opportunities in terms of types of housing, as well as locations of housing throughout the municipality. And also, an important goal that it supports is the opportunity for affordable housing within established neighborhoods, infill development, so, so to speak. It's not really infill development. It's being able to give more people a chance to live in our established neighborhoods without changing the character of the neighborhoods physically.
Okay, so, a couple of quick things. Mr. Oakman, I think, might have had a question for Trishka. Also, Trishka, there were one or two parts when you were talking where things got a little bit distorted, at least to me. So if that happened to other members of the Board, and they have questions or want clarification on something they didn't hear completely clearly, then, you know, now would be a good time to pose those questions to Trishka. And then, then I would like to invite Mr. Cohen and Ms. Sacks to, if they would like, talk a little bit about the work of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee of the Council that led us to this point. I know, I'm not asking you to rehash a bunch of stuff. Michael has, has, you know, summarized and put a bow on things, but if you want to talk at all about the work of your committee, you know, now would be a good time to do that. But Mr. Oakman, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. And it was, it's exactly what you were saying. I think there was a, there was a point where, Trishka, where you, you kind of, you kind of went out, and I think it was an important one, because I wasn't clear on the ownership piece, is the idea here, and I think you were saying that you, this allows for different ownership, but it doesn't, it doesn't allow for subdivision of the property. So is the notion here that some, someone, like the owner of the land, being the owner of the land, but somebody else could own the improvements on the land, that this sort of second unit improvement on the land? I mean, how would you, how would you separate ownership if you're not separating the property?
Sure. First off, I want to apologize if I cut in and out. I'm actually, I'm on vacation at my folks' house, and the Wi-Fi can get a bit spotty at times. So if I have to, I'll just switch to a hotspot on my phone or something. Yeah, I think that's a, you know, it's a great question. So basically, what this would enable is if, in order for those units to be independently, basically, you would have to condominiumize them. And so the lot stays the same, it's still physically intact, you're not drawing any new lot lines, but you are separating out the ownership by using a condominium form of ownership, as opposed to just two separate fee simple lots. That's what this ordinance would enable, as opposed to, without the change, the same person would own both units, both could be rented out, but there would no, be no way for the two to be in separate ownership.
And Jeffrey?
The other thing I just want to say on the subdivision, obviously, a subdivision of land could happen right now, if you were creating conforming lots, at which point the accessory unit just becomes the principal unit of whatever that new lot is that was created. That could happen now. And so the amendment really has nothing, has no impact one way or the other on that.
And Jeffrey, the way condominiumization works is each of the condo owners owns their own unit, but the land is basically a common element that's jointly owned, by both condo, by all the members of the condo association, which would only be two in this case.
So both, both units would pay some, some part of the land, part of the, the property tax, in other words?
Well, the assessor actually, when it's, when it's condominiumized, I think, we'll break it out, but yes, the answer, short answer is yes.
Gotcha. Can I kind of ask that question in a different way?
Sure.
Lou, what this seems to allow is the original owner just to sell, sell another, another, it's not a piece of property, another area, the condominium, as you described as a condominium. And what you're doing is you're allowing the owner to sell that, that to someone else, it would be a separate, there would be a separate owner?
Correct.
Yes, of the, of the unit.
Okay.
And that, that would need, the, the unit would need to be self-contained in terms of, you know, kitchen and bath, that, et cetera, et cetera. I believe it can share an entryway, it can share, possibly share laundry, but other than that, everything needs to be entirely self-contained. So it's not as if someone can just sort of subdivide their house and not, well, maybe I've been over my head here, but...
You couldn't before. I didn't think you could do that before. Even, even if it was still just renting, you still have the same.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's correct.
Rental, as opposed to sale. Am I correct?
That's exactly what it is. It is simply that someone can now own the accessory dwelling unit as opposed to renting it.
Can I just jump in, Louise? I just, because I think we're making this more complicated than it needs to be. Just to go back, Princeton has had a flat ordinance in the township and a secondary dwelling unit in the borough for many decades. In the, in the process of trying to harmonize the land use ordinances, the Land Use Harmonization Group needed to consolidate the two, there were, you know, just variations in the two. For example, the township, it had to be attached, the borough, it had to be detached. There were, you know, minor variations. And so they're needed in, as, as part of a process of consolidating many different ordinances, this one needed to be consolidated so that the requirements were streamlined. And that became the basis for the ADU ordinance, which is the modern terminology. It's basically a modern term for what we've had in Princeton for many decades. And I just would like to note that the sky has not fallen. And the, the new term, the cool term is ADU, accessory dwelling unit. So we, on the Planning Board and on the Council, passed a new ADU ordinance several weeks ago, which harmonizes what these two, you know, ordinances which have been on the books. What is happening to, and, and there was one major change in that ADU ordinance, which was that previously, you, in order to have an ADU and to rent it out, there was a homeowner occupancy requirement. And this has been challenged as unconstitutional in many states, including in New Jersey. And we were advised by Council that it would, in coming up with the new ADU ordinance, that we should remove that. So what, where it stands now is that you can have two units, the main unit and the accessory unit on your property. The homeowner, the principal dwelling owner, need not reside on the property. He or she can rent out both or either. The, the reason why Council is making this change is because in a, part of the affordable housing settlement is, or most of the affordable housing settlement involves rental units. So we are going to be having, in Princeton, tremendous growth of rental properties. And we felt that we wanted there to be a balance between renters and owners. And we also felt like that this would provide, you know, a creative way for people who are, who want to remain on their property, to access the equity in their property without having to move out of town in order to access that equity. And in so doing, hopefully, to provide some smaller-sized units for new families, older people downsizing, but that they could continue to have the ownership opportunity. And we felt like, without providing these mid-range ownership opportunities, that we were basically saying to a whole swath of the population, and that swath is between, you know, the, the hot, very, you know, people who can live here comfortably, and people who can only afford to be here in subsidized housing. We were saying, you can live in Princeton, but only if you're willing to rent and basically, you know, throw away your, not throw away, but, but we're not giving you an opportunity to live in Princeton and build equity. So that was why we made this one change, because we want to incentivize owners who are currently living here to use their property and, and, you know, to create infill within our existing housing stock and, and to create a wider variety of units. Now, I have also seen some of these letters coming in, and there's a mention of, you know, big greedy developers and land grab. And I don't know who, we are making it possible for the people of Princeton who are struggling with taxes to grab their own land. We're not talking about big greedy developers. We're talking about, you know, us, our parents, our children who want to move back from college. So the, really, the, the, what this is about is just, rather than both being rentals, it's making it possible for, it's making it possible for one of them to be owned. So I don't know if I've been any more clear, but I just wanted to try to play.
Well, now that, now that leaves me with, after that, that leaves me with another question. Is that a decision for tonight, or is that a decision for Monday? In other words, I've seen the week, the only thing we were trying to do, do tonight was see whether it was consistent with the master plan. Because I might have more questions, I might have more questions about, about the purposes of this, and what, and what's going on that we might not get into tonight. And, but if it's, if it's consistent with the master plan, then it seems that's, that's, that's kind of what we're limited to. Not the, not the rationale behind it, not, not, not discussions of, of what these other, what the other objections are to it. Not tonight.
That's correct, Mr. McGowan. And Mia was giving us some context, but, but you're absolutely right, that we are, our jurisdiction, our role and responsibility is to judge the consistency with the master plan. Mr. Quinn? And then Mr. Cohen, sorry.
Please allow Mr. Cohen to go first. The, that was the order. I would, I would like to comment and have several questions related to the proposal.
Okay.
So I actually did want to talk a little bit specifically about the consistency with the master plan. I did a little bit of a review this afternoon and found, in the Goals section of the master plan, a couple items that I think are particularly relevant to this. Couple of them are relevant broadly to the ADU ordinance in general, and a couple of them are more applicable to the specific provision of an ownership opportunity. So one of the, one of the housing goals is to provide for the housing needs of that handicapped and elderly. And one of the aspects of this ADU ordinance is that there's actually a bonus, an FAR bonus for units that are fully handicapped acceptable. And as Mia was mentioning, the idea of being able to access equity in your home without having to leave your home, when paired with this providing housing needs for the handicapped and the elderly, I think, is a, is a real sweet spot for the master plan goal, because folks who are on a fixed income, who may be retired, wanting to stay in their home but having trouble paying their taxes, if they can create an ADU that will be enabling them to age in place, and then sit, live in that accessory dwelling unit and sell the primary dwelling to help them with their expenses of continued homeownership in Princeton, I think that's a real, a real significant benefit under the master plan. Another thing that I want to emphasize about this ADU ordinance, that it was actually, the first draft was repaired, was prepared by LRK, the same consultants who did our neighborhood character study. And this was very much drafted to help preserve neighborhood character. The, the choices that we made, well, harmonizing, harmonizing the borough and the township accessory dwelling ordinances that, again, Ms. Sacks referred to, we chose physical characteristics that will allow these ADUs to blend into the neighborhood. So compared to, say, the, the old township ordinance, where you could have two front doors facing the street, and essentially two very similar to equal-sized units, the primary and the flat, could be almost the same size. In, in this new ordinance, the flat has to be significantly smaller than the primary dwelling, and the, the front door cannot face the street. So we didn't liberalize things in every aspect. There are some things that we decided to do to preserve neighborhood character that are features of this, of the new ADU ordinance. I know that doesn't go directly to the separate ownership, but I think it does relate to the separate ownership in the sense that people may have concerns that with the separate ownership, that you're really encouraging some... some speculative development and having additional units built that might not be built if there were not separate ownership. And the point that I'm trying to make is that even if those extra units are built, they're going to be more friendly to existing neighborhood character than what might have been built in the former township under the old flat ordinance. So I think those are the main things that I wanted to to emphasize.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you. I apologize in advance for my dog. I'm I'm here alone and obviously there's someone out front who's trying to break in or something. So I I again, my apologies, I can't exactly get up and bribe him with a treat. First of all, I I'd like to say that I'm this is the third meeting in a row that this board has been told that its role is limited to consistency with the master plan. And I I have to say that I'm I'm kind of getting tired of that because that has never been the practice of this board. All our meetings would be 10 minutes long because everything that we bring that's brought forward is consistent with the master plan. And again, consistent with the master plan that's derided by so many people as being so out of date or unless it's the reexamination point. So first of all, I'm not a NIMBY. Please don't jump online. And at our last hearing, Chase, you have to stop. At our last hearing, acknowledging that a lot of units were being built on a parcel of land and that we should hear from the neighbors, have me branded as a NIMBY. I'm not a NIMBY. I've been studying ADUs and missing middle for a long time. And I was very happy that the current council was able to push the ADU ordinance across the finish line. Well done. This ownership piece is is much trickier than simply creating rental units for existing homeowners. Hang on a second, please. Thank you. I'm sorry, someone will be home soon to take care of him. I think it has the there are a lot of consequences, good and bad for this. I think we received a memo from council's affordable housing subcommittee that I think was the best case scenario. I I'm concerned, I'm usually not the process guy. I think people use process arguments when they just flat out disagree with with what's being proposed or what's being voted on. I support the goals of what's trying to be accomplished here. I think more ownership units that are under a million dollars or under $800,000 or heaven forbid, you know, $400,000. That's a good thing, allowing people to to access the equity in their home in order to stay in town. That's a good thing. I support these things. The ownership piece, as I said, I think that I have a lot of questions and I want to give everyone a chance to talk. That's a that it it has the potential to be to make have significant changes. And I'll just say that while I support the goals of this, something about it just doesn't feel right to me. And I'm just being honest here as again, I I think that we haven't no one's mentioned the local litigation that I think has brought this to the fore. When we talked about neighborhood character and David was correct. Thank you, Council President Cohen, for pointing out that this came out of the neighborhood character and zoning initiative. When that started, it was a deliberate process and a public process and one that there were hearings where people could come and discuss. And I know that that's not possible in a in a pandemic. But it seems like this is an easy way out of litigation that with with someone who's one of us who's a member of the community. And I I think that my fear is that people are going to wake up. And if they if everyone on their block condoizes and they don't, their land value is going to go up, which is a good thing, but their taxes are going to go up too. And if they can't afford to create an ADU, then you're going to have new middle class people moving into these units while the people who can't afford to make the improvements to create an ADU are going to be forced out. That's just one concern. My my broader concern is that, you know, I I got a few emails today. And I just think that I I wish that I know that there's no way for council when faced with litigation to to convene a a public hearing. But I I would I would really ask the person, assuming that that the that the litigant is is listening to this conversation, that they pause the litigation and allow us to have a conversation about how this is going to impact our town. We couldn't do that with affordable housing. I was part of council then. We were under a gag order from the court. And we were in a process that was moving forward whether we liked it or not. It feels to me that this is, I mean, this is going to happen. I know this is going to happen because it's clear that the the courts are going to make it happen. And I know that we pride ourselves on leading on things rather than than following on things. But I don't think that there's a understanding of broader implications. I I sent an email to a member of council and asked for what the comps were. And there are no comps. I don't know whether the response was that there were no New Jersey comps or that there were no national comps. I know California loosened ADU restrictions. I don't know whether they were ownership units. Like, what did this mean for Palo Alto? Was were there were there all of a sudden a lot of affordable ownership units in Palo Alto? It seems to me that there are too many questions and that this is going too fast. And even someone who is a YIMBY on this, even someone who wishes that he could afford to do this in the house that I'm sitting in, not on Quimby's Prairie. It just doesn't feel right. So anyway, I will allow my colleagues and I assume that there are members of the public who want to be heard on this. I support the goals. I think ownership is a good thing. And I I'm worried about I I'm worried that we haven't taken the time to discuss the possible negative ramifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Trishka, since the the issue of the parallel litigation was raised, could you talk a little bit about that? And the and whatever case law is relevant? And just to address Mr. Quinn's or at least, you know, that side of what he mentioned?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. So I think especially for the benefit of your new member, but others may, you know, to the extent, I don't know how much people are aware. But yes, there we are currently in litigation. Was initially filed to challenge the that counsel referred to. And the main thrust of that challenge was the homeowner occupancy requirement, which was viewed as being unlawful under current case law. And there was a secondary aspect of it that also dealt with divisibility of of title, but it was in the context of the homeowner occupancy requirement. As we were in the process of defending that lawsuit, I was meeting regularly with the subcommittee. And it was apparent that these were issues that, as you know, were already being worked on for a long time in terms of the the planning goals and the policy goals. And I think that the changes that were made as part of the first ADU ordinance or the original ADU ordinance are the culmination of work that's actually been going on for a long time. But it's also fair to say that the litigation did accelerate the timetable. It was already something that was being worked on. It was already a goal of the councils to put in place. But being in litigation and faced with a choice of, you know, defending something that everyone wanted to change anyway, or just change it now. That was really, I think, the, you know, one of the drivers on timing, but not on the underlying policy. Now, after the AD ordinance was adopted, the plaintiff in that lawsuit amended the complaint to just raise that one narrow claim, which is that the new ordinance remains invalid because it does not allow for that divisibility of ownership. That's the last claim that's left in this lawsuit. Again, that whole question was being looked at and debated and discussed by the council anyway. And so the amendment that is now being brought forward reflects those policy and those planning goals. The litigation, however, drives the timing. And, you know, to Mr. Quinn's point about, you know, sometimes feeling like things are, you know, accelerated and you don't have as long a process as you might have otherwise, I think the answer is yes. And that is unfortunate. When you're in litigation, you're not in control of the schedule. And, you know, we've we've done our best, but it's ultimately up to a judge. And so I think once again, you have a council that was faced with the quandary of this is a planning and a policy goal that they want to advance, but they may be having to advance it a little faster than they might have otherwise because we are in litigation. But I just want to be clear that this is the litigation is not driving the policy choice. It's only driving the timing.
Has the same question been litigated in other towns in New Jersey? Is there?
Not that I could find. Not not that not in this context. And one of the things that I just I may start to get evasive with some of the questions about the merits because the litigation is still pending. We're still in the process of briefing. And so I I don't want to litigate it in in this context. I want to litigate it in front of a judge or not at all. And I think my connection may have frozen up again. Did I just freeze up on you guys again?
No, there was.
It's been happening on and off.
Not for me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. McGowan, did you have a problem hearing?
It's just been happening on and off. I can I can follow what's going on. I'm not, you know, not to repeat again.
Ms. Cecil, if you can maybe turn off your camera, that sometimes helps to keep it a little bit more stable.
I also prefer to have it off anyway. Much better for everybody, myself included.
Are there other questions for Ms. Cecil or for council members before we hear from the public? Okay. And is there anything, Michael, that you want to add?
I would just want to restate that I understand Mr. Quinn's concern. But at this stage in the process of considering an ordinance, the role of the planning board is in fact to look at its consistency with the current community master plan. So I just I all these this discussion is important. And we've covered a lot of interesting issues this evening. But this is the beginning of a process for this ordinance. A lot of hearing time will take place at the municipal council. So I just wanted to remind everyone of what the charges for the planning board this evening, which is the master plan consistency.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, are people raising their hands? I expect.
Yes, we have. We have three people with their hands up. The first is just a phone. Now we have four. The first is just a phone number. So we want to ask them to identify themselves immediately as I allow them to speak.
Okay. And I I would also just note for people that those who wish to speak that we're going to try to keep it to about three minutes per person, please. You could try to respect that. We greatly appreciate it.
I think.
So 609, 582.
Yeah, I'm trying trying to get them. I'm not having luck with that. See if they can unmute themselves. I don't know exactly how that works on the phone, unfortunately.
Please, while we're waiting, can you remind me on on for the master plan hearings? Are we and and on Zoom or are do we ask people to give addresses? Because someone asked me that, whether we were still doing that or not.
I'm accustomed to hearing name with the spelling of the last name and quote, where you live. So that doesn't mean necessarily a specific street address, but it's but the street general street or neighborhood is a good thing to know.
I I am afraid that the unmuting doesn't I'm having trouble with it. And the the caller also doesn't seem to be able to do it. So I'm going to move on to the next commenter, which is Michael Floyd. Michael, can you unmute yourself?
All right. Got me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you are have had this discussion up to this point because I think this is not the most clear issue. And especially for some of the planning board members.
Oh, he is muted again.
How about?
One more time, Michael.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, good. So let me go down my sheet here. I don't have too too much to say. I'm glad you had this discussion. Some of the early questions were some of the questions I have and and had. I I still have some of them, you know, if if there is a freestanding building that has an accessory unit, you know, you're not selling the land or they're not selling the land underneath it. So be it, that answers one of my questions. I think there are going to be a lot of a number of administrative and legal issues that'll come up as developers will pursue this. And it's not like the problems and sort of some of the developers' attempts are going to be new. I think the zoning office and I've been on a zoning board for a number of years, though I'm not representing the zoning board tonight in speaking. But I think the unintended consequences can be identified now. It's not something that just council will monitor in the future as the memo says. I wish there was some discussion of that. I I I do think developers will pursue this hard. You can look at this particular first building in the John Witherspoon neighborhood where it's sort of the the least cost private housing. The property was bought for $390,000. Yes, rehab and a and a small addition put on. But now the the small unit is going to be listed at $350,000. but now the, the small unit is going to be listed at $350,000, which is, you know, equal to, close to what the house was going to, has sold for in the past. So there's money to be made, and developers have pursued and asked about ADUs in the past. And I think there are consequences that can be discussed now if you choose to discuss them. I think also I just hope that the planning board members understand the ADU code, the definition, how it works, what the limitations are on the units. I mean, do you know what the limitations are as far as size? Things like that. I just think this is being rushed through, and I, I wish that it would slow down and there could be more discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
All right, our next person is Kip Cherry.
Am I okay?
Yes, you are. Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Go right ahead.
Right, thank you. Kip Cherry here. I would like to note that I think this discussion is more than simply whether the ordinance proposed is consistent with the master plan. I think this is the advisory role of the planning board towards the council. I think it's a much broader role. And I think that is not consistent with the master plan because I think that the situation will lead to deterioration in the neighborhoods, and I will explain that. I also think that this is not a small change. This is a major change, and it deserves wide public discussion. We just put on the agenda for the planning board today or yesterday. Within the last few days, the HPC has not had a chance to weigh in on it, and it seems all very rush, rush. And I don't think we should be doing this in response to litigation. I think this should be something that is freely being discussed. And I don't agree that it meets the, the goals of, of the council in spite of the fact that they think that it does. I do think that we lay a lot of pressure on prices, purchase prices and rental prices. And I think that the ultimate situation will be that prices will go up. I do not think this is a way towards affordable housing, and I think that it's misunderstanding to think that it is. This has nothing to do with affordable housing. This is a situation in which a developer is interested, or somebody is interested in a separate unit from, and existing main building. I do think that investors will be very interested in this sort of thing. I think the question about whether this is going to be a condominium or whether there's going to be some kind of a subdivision remains to be seen. Condominium associations are very difficult when there are only two members, and they generally fall apart. So this is not a good legal remedy for that kind of a situation. Finally, I think that we're going to have major deterioration in the accessory units because they no longer will be under the control of the main owner of the property. And we all know that main owners have more influence over a, let's say, a dwelling unit and a garage than if they own the garage than if they don't. And I think this is particularly true of historic district areas where the main owner has a real respect for the historic nature of their main building. And the, the investor or the buyer of a, a accessory dwelling unit will have no connection to that. And in fact, the accessory unit will have very little historical value except within the context of the neighborhood and the historic district. And I think that it's going to be a big problem for neighborhoods to try to get these sorts of units to be kept in good repair. And I think that this is going to be a rabbit hole. And I, I don't think it should be easily slipped into. And I, I strongly disagree with the characterization that this is no biggie. This is a biggie. So I think that's all I need to say at this point. And obviously, I'm very concerned about it and concerned about my town, and I'm concerned about historic districts and, and their viability and their preservation. Thank you.
Louise, it's Jerry.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cherry. Jerry?
Yeah, if I could just repeat what I said at the beginning. The, the primary focus is on consistency with the master plan. But the municipal land use law, as I indicated earlier, also said the board in its report back to the governing body can address any other matters that it deems appropriate. And Trish joined me in that as well. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
And Louise, would it be okay if I just respond briefly to the issue with historic preservation? Because I do feel it deserves a response. One thing that I want to mention is that the, there are many kinds of ADUs that can actually be built within a historic district, within the historic structures. So for instance, you could have an ADU that was in the main dwelling unit. We have many of those in the western section, servants quarters with a separate entrance, separate kitchen facilities that are currently being used as rental units, which could be under this change in the ordinance, then sold to help the owner of the main residence again access the equity in their building. So that's one type, garages that could be, or carriage houses that can be converted to dwelling units. So I think that it's really a mistake to think of this as somehow incompatible with the historic districts. And if by chance a property owner in a historic district decides that they want to build something that is not part of the historic structure, the Historic Preservation Commission will continue to have every bit of power that they have to review and make recommendations for how to make that new construction consistent with the historic district as they, as they do right now. So I just wanted to address that. And, and I think that it's prejudicial to say that just because somebody buys a smaller dwelling unit, an accessory unit in a historic district, that they would somehow not be committed to the historic character of the place that they're deciding to purchase is really a pretty baseless assertion.
The next person that was hoping to speak, the, the person phoning in, we should be able to accept their comments now.
All right, I'll allow them.
I just tried.
Yeah. Are they able to unmute?
There you go. Can you hear us?
Hello.
Good. Could you please state your name for the record and spell your last name? And tell us where you live?
Sure, it's Joe Ammon, A-M-O-N. I live at 202 Union Street. I was actually calling in for another agenda item. So I appreciate all of the efforts to get me in on this agenda item, but I'll hold my comments for the, the application for Union Street. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, our next member of the public is Virginia Kerr.
Hi, David, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Welcome, Ms. Kerr. Go right ahead.
Thank you. My name's Virginia Kerr. I live at 124 Jefferson Road. I saw this ordinance on the agenda of the council on the August 10th meeting. And I'm here tonight because I, I was concerned about the following explanation from council for the committee, which says the attached ordinance would amend the definition of accessory dwelling to eliminate the common ownership requirement. Quote, "In addition to the various planning goals, the elimination of common ownership requirement would resolve all the remaining claims against the municipality and the zoning board of adjustment in a lawsuit that was filed by 23 Lay LLC earlier this year, 23 Lay LLC versus Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment et al., docket number M-E-R-L-4620." I sent an email earlier, and I'm assuming some of you read it, so you know what I'm going to say. I do, I, I am troubled at the thought that Princeton Council is making a major change in zoning in order to settle litigation. I don't think this is the way that planning should proceed. And I appreciate Trishka's, Cecil's comments, which I think she acknowledged that the litigation and the, the interest in settling this litigation kind of accelerated the consideration of this. But for me, even the idea of accelerating the consideration of something like this because of litigation is really troublesome because it's fundamentally inconsistent with the idea of planning and rational planning. And whether or not this is consistent with overall policy goals, for me, is secondary to the thought of why should we be doing this now in response to a lawsuit? And I'm going to move to the second point, and now I'm going to just, you know, walk off the plank of speculation. But I heard the answer that there are no, there are no similar cases out there in New Jersey. And I'm asking myself, what is the constitutional issue here? And are these developers arguing that somehow their property rights are infringed by a common ownership regulation? And the whole property rights theme in the courts these days, state and federal, is, you know, driven by developers and largely conservatives. And, and it's, and it's very troublesome. And so I'm asking myself, why shouldn't we be defending this? And why shouldn't we be arguing, no, this is not a violation of, you know, whatever the property rights argument there. And so I'm going to stop because I'm really speculating about what the arguments are. And I'm going to go on to the second practical point. I mean, I think it's wonderful that, that council has adopted an ordinance to make it easier for people to rent, to have accessory dwellings and to rent out accessory dwellings. I mean, I, I'm, I have serious questions about whether eliminating the common, common ownership requirement is going to create the goods that have been described. I'm thinking to myself, well, gee, getting the equity out of the primary dwelling is going to come with a huge capital gains hit for people. And, you know, and I'm thinking I have a detached garage. Like, can I sell my detached garage? Or can I condominiumize? And what about the park? I mean, there's so many, there are so many issues that come up when you think about dividing ownership, that I just really question whether we should be doing this now. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Our next speaker is Steve Cohen.
Good evening. I just, actually, I wanted to, I started out just after I listened to Mr. Quinn, that I really wanted to reinforce what he said, and I agreed with him. Since listening to the other speakers, I feel that, you know, before this can really be passed, that the, both the pros and the cons, the, the unintended consequences really need to be investigated before this is, again, this is probably more appropriate for the council meeting Monday night. But I think we've got to look at the pros and the cons of this before this ordinance is pushed through. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Our next speaker is Valerie Haynes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead, Ms. Haynes.
Hi. I, I want to speak in support of this amendment to the ordinance. Just for the refreshing the memory of everyone, the ADU ordinance has already been adopted. We're only talking about the narrow issue of whether or not one person has to own both units or whether the units could be individually owned with some sort of a condo or some legal form like that. And I support this because I've been living now on my block in Mount Lucas Road for 28 years. And it's a block that was developed over a long period of time. We have older homes on this block, as well as some that were just built in the last couple of years. There are very modest, some very modest homes. And there are also some homes that are, you know, new builds that were, replace other homes that sell, sell for somewhere, you know, between one and $2 million. So it's quite a diverse block. Most of the, and this is a block with a quarter acre, single family zoning. Most of the properties are single family, but there are also properties that contain rental units. There are condominiums on my block, and there are some duplexes. So it's quite, it's quite a diverse block. And, and as a result, all the things that might occur as this ordinance is implemented over time already exist right here, and it works fine. The variety of housing types and the ownership variety that has resulted is a neighborhood that has a mix of households, some who are just starting out, some who are seniors like myself. Increasing numbers of younger families with children have moved into some of these homes. It's a great place to live, and that's demonstrated by the fact that the value of these homes keeps going up. As, as we all know, when we see our, our, our revaluations and assessments, and we're constantly getting solicitations from realtors who want us to sell our homes to the buyers they have lined up. So I, I think that the concerns that people are expressing are, you know, I can understand that when you, you're thinking about something for the first time, you're not sure what will happen, but I, I can tell you that it's okay. It, it works out. The current ordinance that we have now will allow speculative ownership of properties by absentee landlords who would rent both units. I'm not sure that that is preferable in any way to having two people, each owning a unit, each having a stake in the community, each having equity in the property. I, I think that, you know, either way couldn't work, but why we would exclude owners is, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Also, as has been mentioned, the modification would allow property owners to realize some of the equity in their property without moving away. And at the same time, they would avoid the responsibility of becoming a landlord. And I'm sure that there are many people who are not eager to become landlords but would not mind having another household sharing the upkeep of their, of their property, of their land. Further, the, the board, as we've all heard repeatedly tonight, the board is required to look at the master plan and decide whether or not this is consistent. Last month, Princeton adopted a new housing element in the master plan and set forth their housing goals. And one of the things that it, it, it sets as a goal is promoting diverse livable neighborhoods. Another one is ensuring an adequate supply of housing is available to meet the needs, preferences and financial capabilities of Princeton's residents. And promotion and creation of a range of owner occupied and rental housing types, price and rents to create culturally and economically diverse neighborhoods. And I think that this, this amendment to the ADU ordinance will accomplish all of those goals. And I, I hope you will approve that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beverly Leach.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Ms. Leach. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm Beverly Leach. I live at, oh my goodness, what a picture. I live at 293 Witherspoon Street. And my husband and I have lived here for many years. I'd like to second what Valerie Haynes has just said so, so very well, I think. And I'm, at this point at least, And I'm, at this point at least, in favor of the, the council's recommendation because from everything you presented tonight, it seems to me that is, it is pretty much in line with the master plan's recommendations. The thing I personally like about it as a senior citizen, my husband and I are 75 years old now, is the flexibility that it affords the neighborhood, some of our neighbors whom I've talked with as well, and, and us personally. As far as whether people will be able to, seniors would be able to afford converting part of their property to an ADU or not, or who would live in it, would we rent it, would we sell it? It just affords seniors all sorts of options, which frankly, we don't, we can't possibly know right now. You know, somebody at my age hopes we'll be living in our own home for 10 or even 20 years at this point. But I can't tell you what we will want to do, whether my grandchildren, who would then be grown, would want to take part of the house and own it themselves. I just think the, the flexibility this, this offers is, is very favorable. And that's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maria Huaga.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Go right ahead, Ms. Huaga.
Thank you. So I'm also in strong support of the amendment to the ADU ordinance. This amendment will allow retired, older homeowners like myself on a fixed income, the option of remaining in place as opposed to being forced to sell our older, smaller, more modestly priced homes due to the inability to keep up with nonstop increasing taxes and upkeep costs. The homestead tax credits and the senior property tax freeze, which provided some relief in the past, have been suspended due to the current state fiscal crisis, which is not likely to be cured anytime soon. This amendment would allow us the option of sharing ownership of our property in exchange for a certain amount of cash, which could be used to pay our existing mortgage or perhaps do some necessary improvements. And also the advantage of being able to share the upkeep of our property with the other owner going forward. This change to the existing ordinance would also bring to the Princeton market new, modern, reasonably priced homes for diverse sectors of the population that currently can't afford to live in Princeton, such as young working adults, middle class families, and other seniors who are downsizing, et cetera. And this would be a gradual, organic process that would be consistent with the character of the existing neighborhoods and benefit many individual current property owners while lowering the barriers to just as many families who would be able to access homeownership for the first time. So there's nothing in this amendment, in my opinion, that would be inconsistent with the Princeton master plan as has been mentioned before. And to the contrary, I think it would reaffirm our commitment to a more fair, diverse, and sustainable community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Matt Malesko, or I don't know how to pronounce it. But Matt, you can tell us. Sorry, hold on.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
It's, it's Matt Malesko. It was close. I'm a, I'm a graduate student. I live at the Lakeside Complex. I'd also, I want to speak in favor of this ordinance amendment as well. I agree with board member and council member Cohen and what others have said, that this ordinance is in keeping with the Princeton master plan. As I have a few comments. We seem to have these conversations, you know, in, without acknowledging the massive undersupply of housing, not just in the country, but in our region. And planners and local policymakers need to be thinking about how to increase the supply of housing. And ADUs are a key component of that. Regional Plan Associates, a collection of planners and policy experts for the tri-state area, specifically recommends the removal of owner occupancy and relational requirements for ADUs. These requirements are a disincentive for developing exactly the kind of housing that is undersupplied in our communities. And doing away with them can help add to, you know, desperately needed affordable housing units in Princeton. And as was previously mentioned, aging members of our community, another housing option, and opens the door to homeownership for previously, you know, for communities that exhibit a lot of disparities and lack of access to homeownership historically. And, you know, to, to the point about this being rushed, I can't really speak to how this came about. But I'd also just like to add in it's hard to overstate just how lacking we are in affordable housing, particularly low and very low income housing. I wish that were a sense of urgency. And, you know, we've been living with this for decades. And it's, I'm not sure why that gets lost in all of this. But at any rate, I just want to reiterate my support for this. And I do think it's in keeping with the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last is Kristin Thoft. Oops, one more, it just went up. But Kristin.
Hi. I'm Kirsten Thoft, and I live at 45 Linden Lane. And I wanted to speak very briefly also in support of this amendment, primarily because I strongly believe that we need more economic diversity in homeownership in this town. There's a distinction made in green building and planning between monocultures and, and non-monocultures. Monocultures being like cornfields, and non-monocultures being like rainforests. And here in Princeton, I think that we are trending towards a monoculture in our housing stock. And it's not sustainable. It excludes so many people. And I believe that we need diversity in sizes of dwelling units and configurations of dwelling units, and the prices of them as well. And I think that this amendment will help to make that happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
And our last race is Yana Moore.
Can you hear me, David?
Yes, we can. It's Moore. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am against this amendment to the ADU. The ADU, when first conceived over 15 years ago by the planning board, had, in its inception, the concept of affordability, the affordability of the current property owner to gain additional income by rental. Rentals are one way to control affordability. Once you move the units into the marketplace of being for sale and as condos, there is no control unless under COA or other specific limitations to equity and the like. There is nothing that prevents that perhaps first sale at $350 to be resold at $500, whatever the market can bear. Now, with regard to housing stock and a monoculture, Princeton was a monoculture years ago, only having single family homes, and, but of varying sizes and varying prices. Princeton has moved well beyond that and continues to by developing other housing types like townhouses and some developments, apartments, and has, within its existing housing stock, has always had some grandfathered in ADUs. And they have ranged from being in the more dense neighborhoods to the western section, over garages or carriage houses. But interestingly enough, those apartments were affordable. They will no longer maintain that affordability by virtue of the market pushing the prices up. When you look at the fact that this lawsuit is based on a house in the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood, the most, at one time, affordable neighborhood, but the highest price on a per square foot basis, that is just, this is just an attempt at capturing profits at the lowest cost by a developer who wants to change the neighborhood from affordable rentals, affordable ownership, to ownership that goes to the marketplace without any constraints. Matt, you won't be able to afford this tiny house ADU on the lot three years from now. It will not be the affordable, what you believe is affordable in any neighborhood. Clearly, if the western section is going to get ADUs, and they have much more land to, to accommodate that, they will be high-priced condos. They will no longer seem like garage space, over the garage space. This is a destructive tool. And if you haven't looked at what occurred in California, Northern California, Silicon Valley and the like, it is not the panacea of affordability. It may be a lower price relative to the higher-priced unit, but these prices escalate with the marketplace. And if the marketplace comes and wants to buy at $500, it'll buy at $500, $600. Who would have thought that the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood, prior to its becoming historic, historically designated, would have four, five, six, you know, over $1 million, even $2 million houses? The constraint around the historic is purely a design and physical matter, does nothing with regard to affordability. So there's no hope down the line that there's going to be some saving grace by having the HPC look at this, not in terms of affordability, maybe compatibility in a physical sense, that's it. But this is going to destroy the neighborhoods that had once been most affordable. When you talk about, you know, Mount Lucas and that whole area, it's a different story. Not every neighborhood will suffer in the same way, or the impacts will not be the same. And they are very predictable because it's going to make properties, certainly in the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood, and others, much more valuable because now you're purchasing at a price that's a two-unit proposition versus the single owner occupant managed ADU. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anybody else wish to speak, Mr. Cohen?
That's, that's, that's everybody.
Members of the board? Thoughts? Questions?
I have, can I ask you a question? Is it true, am I reading the ordinance correctly, to say that there is a maximum, an 800 square, 800 square foot unit that could be built? Is that, is that the maximum limit?
The maximum is 800 square feet or 25% of the primary dwelling, whichever is larger.
Less. I think it's less.
Right, whichever's less.
So the max, the maximum is 800 feet?
No, 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 no. It's whichever greater. It's, it can be over 800 if...
Okay. That, that, you know, that was my, that was my, that was during my question. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Other, other questions or thoughts?
I just wanted to give, I just wanted to give some feedback. A couple members of HBC felt this would help affordability. A couple other members were concerned about increased pressure for curb cuts, stairways, exterior additions and entrances. So I know HBC will still review these things, but there was concern there would be extra pressure to accommodate them.
Thank you.
Could I ask, could I ask a question?
Mueller.
Does, does any, anybody may have a question of Trish? Because I know she's on vacation, and I'm totally enjoying this. But if, if we're finished with her and we can let her go, that might be a nice thing to do. But so I just raised it.
That is very civilized of you. Does anybody have a question for Ms. Cecil before she drops off? Okay, Trishka, you are free to go.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Appreciate your perspective. Thank you.
Absolutely. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks. You too.
I'm just trying to, to work some of these things, issues out of my mind. There seem to be two opposing scenarios that are being set up. One is that this is an amendment that will help seniors, older residents, other residents as well continue within Princeton. The other fear is that, on the other hand, there's a fear that developers are just waiting in the wings to buy a property, split them up, and either, you know, sell them. And since there is no homeowner requirement for, for these properties, you know, I mean, you have to think about, you know, absentee landlordism and what that entails. And that's a whole different change to Princeton, or at least the character of Princeton as well. I don't really have a comment or a question. I'm just, or a question or even a point at this point. But I'm just trying to work all these, these issues out and think this through. And, you know, I know that I would prefer to have a little more time. I believe this was just added to the agenda on Tuesday morning, and...
Well, the notice went to the papers, et cetera, the day after the council meeting. I honestly don't know. I know we did get more than one copy of the agenda, but I think it was longer ago than a couple days. But I could, I don't mean to be parsing that.
No, 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 it's, you know, but, you know, to be honest with you, I feel like I'm not totally up to speed on all the issues involved. Although, you know, tonight was a very eye-opening and educational experience for this, so.
Yeah. If I could respond to Owen, I think, you know, you actually nailed it in terms of what the crux of the issue is. And even council had some concern, and staff had some concern that develop, developers' interest in using this to develop a different price point of, you know, of, of homes would really stimulate redevelopment and, and pace of redevelopment. And there was some concern about that. But I think, at least for myself, when I stopped to realize that even if a developer was doing this, essentially what would be happening on a single lot would be, you know, maybe a million... maybe a $1 million house and a $600,000 secondary unit, or, you know, maybe a little bit more for each of them, a little bit less, depending on the size of the lot and how much square footage could be developed there, but that it's really preferable to a teardown and a $1.6 million house, or $1.8 million house, where it's really going to help diversify the homeownership opportunities in town. And so I don't mean to make light of the development pressure, the developer pressures that may arise out of this, but I'm just explaining how I, myself, made peace with, with that, both the fact that it would be diversifying the housing types, but also that the way that the ADU ordinance is written, it's very intentionally trying to make these blend better into the neighborhoods, and it's companion piece to the, to the neighborhood character form-based code that we passed a couple of years ago. I know it was before you were on the planning board, but, you know, the teardowns that we're going to be seeing should be quite different and more compatible with our neighborhoods than what they were two years ago, where people were putting these, you know, big snout houses with a garage being almost the only thing you could see. So those are the two mitigating factors in my mind.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, so I guess I'll share my thoughts on this. I mean, I don't really feel strongly, well, I mean, I, I feel I'm poor allowing this ordinance to be changed, although, and I think it's going to be a good thing, but I, you know, it's hard to really say what the impact will be one way or another. I think, really, at the end of the day, on whatever side you land on, or whatever opinion you have, it's speculation. You're speculating on what, what will happen. I mean, I think that, you know, there's certain things that we can guess will happen. I mean, I think that by allowing this, what you'll do is probably make certain people's properties probably worth a lot more, because they can utilize that portion of their house or their garage, or, you know, that space that they could build something, which, I mean, you know, for those people, I'm sure that they'd be very thrilled to have something like that. I mean, I guess neighborhoods will change, but I, I don't really think that it will be that detrimental to the neighborhoods. I think that, you know, we, especially, you know, in terms of the planning board, I think for the most part, want to see more diverse housing stock and more density in downtown, which I think will be a good thing for the town. I think it will help improve the economy, you know, to have more people in downtown or in town. And as far as affordability kind of aspect of it, I, I'm not sure if it's really going to make it, like, affordable for, you know, low-income families. I don't think, I don't think anybody really thinks that. I think that, but it will probably allow for a little bit more opportunities for this missing middle, which, you know, some people alluded to earlier, where, you know, maybe a million-dollar home could be kind of split into, you know, a $300,000 home and a $700,000 home, or something like that, or property. And that would allow for, you know, maybe a couple to come and move into Princeton, or, you know, a small family, which I think, you know, at the end of the day, that will probably be a good thing. So, you know, I don't want to, you know, go on about this, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, planning, you know, there's, there's certain principles and certain things that we can guess will happen, but, you know, there's a little bit of experimentation, and, you know, we can, we can try to study this, you know, we can have, you know, our planner look into it, or hire a consultant, but, you know, at the end of the day, I don't know if we're really going to accomplish much by just dragging this on or talking about it longer. You know, I guess we'll, you know, the councils ultimately the ones that's going to decide, and they can choose to talk about it at NHAJ. But as far as the, you know, planning board is concerned, in terms of planning, good planning principles, I think that, you know, everywhere you read in, in planning literature, which, you know, I tend to, to read a lot, you know, accessory dwelling units are a great solution to dealing with the housing crisis, to providing for missing middle housing, and, you know, especially in a town like Princeton where you want to densify, because we are a walkable town, we want to put more people living here, we want to improve the economy of the downtown. I think it's, it's, you know, a good thing. So, that's just my two cents.
Yep. I, I'll just chime in, and, and I'll, let me first call then on Mr. Quinn.
No, no, please.
Well, I, I agree with much of what Mr. Texarney said, and I too think, on balance, this is the right thing to do, although I also understand that both of the scenarios that Mr. O'Donnell thought about could come to pass, that you're not, you know, you are not foreclosing the possibility of, you know, developers and speculators coming in and purchasing properties and, and creating doubles where there was, you know, a, a primary and secondary unit where there was just one. But as I said, I think on balance, it is the right thing to do, and I also just want to say, I, I was sympathetic, Mr. Quinn, to something you said very early on about being, you know, not wanting to feel like we had a very narrow scope here, meaning the question of consistency with the master plan, and I used an unfortunate choice of words early on when I, I think, referenced the master plan box. I view the master plan, and this, much of what Mr. Texarney said, spoke to various elements of the master plan, and, and that, you know, that's a big, important document with broad implications. So while I, I understand that when we're just talking about ordinances, we are dealing with consistency with the master plan, that's no small thing. That's not necessarily a narrow kind of focus, so I just wanted to point that out, and I appreciate your talking about how to look at big-picture things. And now...
I just want to...
Go right ahead.
I just want to jump in for a second. There was a question in Q and A about the need to comment using Q and A instead of verbal. I wasn't able to respond to the Q and A, but I think public comment has been closed. Is that...
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not formally close public comment, but I believe it's also true that we can take public comment only orally and not via Q and A, although I could be wrong about that. Mr. Mueller, would you weigh in?
Yeah, it should be oral, so that the board members have an opportunity to question the person raising whatever point they raise.
Okay. So Sam Bunting has raised his hand. Do you want to, since we didn't formally close public?
Yes, I apologize for that oversight on my part. Let's let Mr. Bunting make his remarks, and then try to bring this thing home.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Yes, I wanted to comment on the proposed accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I wanted to express a lot of support for that ordinance. I think it's very clearly within the remit of the master plan and consistent with the community master plan. Furthermore, I think it's a good idea. Similar accessory dwelling unit ordinances in which ownership can be held by a third party have already been passed in the state of California, and the, there are no substantial obstacles to implementing such an ordinance. Clearly, the ordinance will fit the master plan goal of creating an increased diversity of housing opportunities at different price points. This is a very serious issue in the town of Princeton, where many people really struggle to find housing that they can afford. I can testify, based on my conversations with low-income residents in the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood, that there is a real strong demand for housing, especially housing at lower price points. The town is replete with homes which are suitable for millionaires, and there just aren't enough homes for people of lesser means. In particular, I think that anything which can incentivize the creation of accessory dwelling units is likely to be advantageous, because it will lead to more housing opportunities which are consistent with neighborhoods. Every time there is a proposal for an apartment complex, such as the one which is currently under consideration on Franklin Avenue, there is inevitably a lively and controversial debate about whether it fits the character of the neighborhood. Accessory dwellings allow housing to be added in a way which is contextual with the neighborhood, which is consistent with Princeton's historic character. Therefore, accessory dwelling units ought to be incentivized. Instead of accessory dwelling, what we are seeing instead is teardowns of aging homes then being replaced by large McMansions. This is happening all over the town, and as an alternative to that, it would be better for those sites to be added to with an accessory dwelling unit, maintaining the existing home and adding another opportunity for lower-income households to participate in residency in Princeton. As things stand, Princeton's accessory dwelling is relatively good, but this ordinance will make it better, because not everyone who could have an accessory dwelling unit wants to be a landlord and to deal with the issues of maintaining and compliance with all necessary rental laws. By allowing third-party ownership, you offer an opportunity to the homeowner to use their land and have additional housing units added in a way which is more flexible and easy for the homeowner. Therefore, this ordinance has, offers the opportunity to be beneficial to existing homeowners, to create new housing, and to do so in a way which is compatible with the existing character of neighborhoods. Therefore, I offer my strong support for the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Bunting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to vote on this? Is this the end of vote, or just a sense of what the board is and send the comments on, on to council? Because the reason I'm asking is, I've refrained from making any comments about what I may or may not think, think about, think about this, because, again, there was this narrow issue of whether it's consistent with the master plan, and so that's, that's...
Which, as I said before, I personally don't see as a super narrow issue, just because the master plan is expansive, but I take your point, and it is, it is what we're being asked to do. I believe we do take action, unless I'm mistaken. Mr. Mueller, please correct me if I'm wrong, but someone would move, and another person second, that we find this ordinance consistent with the master plan, and if there are any other considerations that we want council to ponder, then we can lay those, that thing or those things out. Is that correct, Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's what it's all about.
Well, with, with that, can I, can I make, can I make, it's not going to be long. I, I do want to make at least a brief comment. I, I have concerns, and within Witherspoon Jackson, I have concerns there. There seems to be, it's going to preserve neighborhood, neighborhood character, but, you know, the, there's a lot of non-conforming zoning in, in Witherspoon Jackson, and, you know, the units, I think there are a lot of units you couldn't build there now that already exist there, and I'm not sure adding, adding, adding these others, these other ADUs is going to, to help that. Now, I say that not because I'm a NIMBY. I, I was for what, what ADUs originally were for, which was a way for someone who owned a home to stay in the neighborhood where they were and get extra income, and this has expanded from, and what we're talking about now is something that's, that's been expanded, you know, from, you know, from that original idea. So, again, that's my concern is, you know, I, I'm not so sure that, that, again, in these, in Witherspoon Jackson, maybe the tree streets, you do this, and if they're all, if you already have a bunch of non-conforming lots, we, you couldn't have built on them to begin with, this is not, this is going to potentially exacerbate a problem.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would just, I'd point out that the, the fact that the, three of the, my colleagues on the board, the last three who have spoken, have expressed great ambivalence about this, about the, what it will and will not do, just goes to show to me that the groundwork for such a major change has not taken place in the community, and I have to own some of that as a former member of council and as a longtime member of this board. And again, I know that trying to talk the plaintiff in this case into holding off for a while so that the community can be educated about, you know, nothing is going to be perfect, and it, nothing is going to be a disaster with this. People, senior, senior citizens who can afford to, to make the capital investment in their houses, will be able to realize a, will be able to realize and be able to stay in town. But seniors who can afford that on a block where many of their houses are, many other houses are developed in such a fashion, or by homeowners or by developers, will not, and there's, it's not a cure-all, and it's not the end of the world, but, again, I, I think there's, there's so much ambivalence and so much hope about this, and there's two little facts. Mr. Bunting, my friend, who spoke very eloquently about this, and used the words neighborhood character, which I thought were not part of his vocabulary, you know, he, he referenced California. I don't know what hap, I mean, I, I, I know what happened with Palo, in Palo Alto, but what happened in Davis? What happened in Sacramento? What happened in other towns that set ownership for ADUs? Did prices go down? Did it create missing middle housing? I, I don't know. I mean, again, I'm being asked to vote on whether it's consistent with the master plan, and I will vote yes, but as, again, as someone who's dealt with this issue for a long time, I, I would like, I would like the community to have the opportunity to be better informed rather than, you know, rather than save a few bucks on litigation. And, again, not a NIMBY, I support the goals, more ownership units are good, more housing for, allowing seniors to age in place, it's all good. Having a community conversation about just what's involved with this change is even better, so that my colleagues, Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Texarney, aren't saying, yeah, well, you know, it's kind of confusing, but it sounds like it might achieve these goals. And, again, nothing is perfect. Maybe it does, maybe it does achieve all the goals that were set out in the memo from council, but there's, there was nothing backing that, nothing that said, in this community, they did this, and this was the experience. It was just sort of, is it consistent with the master plan? Yes, vote for it and let council decide. Yes, vote for it and let council decide." Well, I applaud our council. They're clearly a pro-growth council. They're not afraid. They're not NIMBYs. Again, I applauded them for getting the original ADU piece over the line. It would be nice if we had more time as a community to have a discussion about the implications for this, because this is not sort of like a blackboard exercise. It's not a blue-sky thing. This is an ordinance that's going to be passed by council. And if it doesn't work out, then a different council, or maybe the same council, will have to consider another ordinance to undo it, after which time either a lot of damage will have been done or a lot of good stuff will have been done. So, I know I didn't clear anything up for my colleagues, but it would be great if we all had more time to learn about this, to bring someone from AARP in, to... I disagree with Mr. Texarney. You know, I'd like to hear from Mr. Constantine about this. I'd like to hear from other planners. I'd like to hear from communities where this has worked. I'd feel better about voting yes. Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, maybe I'll chime in real quickly, since my name was mentioned.
Invoked. Go ahead.
Invoked. Exactly.
I yield to the gentleman.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm sure that Mr. Constantine would be happy to talk about the benefits of, you know, living in these types of units, because he does. And he actually has a fantastic example of, you know, what can be done in that regard. But, yeah, again, I think that we can, you know, bring in all the professionals. We can talk about this at nausea. But I think we're gonna come to the same place that we are right now, which is, you know, the people that think that it's not gonna be a good thing are gonna think that it's not gonna be a good thing, and the people that are gonna think that it's a good thing are gonna think it's a good thing. Maybe you'll change a few minds along the way. But, and, you know, I think that that's up to the council to decide. They're the ones, ultimate decision-makers. But I think that as far as the planning board is concerned and, you know, us deciding whether it's consistent with the master plan... I mean, I oftentimes say this, you know, that the master plan is a little ambiguous. You know, it doesn't explicitly say you have to do this. But, you know, the master plan does say that we should be promoting diversity in housing stock. It does promote ADUs. I think that providing flexibility in terms of ownership and property rights, I think, is a good thing in this regard. And I think that it's also... There's a legal precedent. And I think that that's also something that certainly, you know, is important to think about. So, you know, I said that I was kind of like, you know, not so certain before. But, you know, I think in general, I support this. I think that it will probably be a good thing for the town. And you're gonna create some... You know, if you're gonna incentivize more places like, you know, Mr. Constantine's home, not to call him out, you're gonna have some really awesome places in town. And I think it'll be a good thing for the town overall.
Absolutely.
Is that an ownership unit, though, that Mr. Constantine lives in?
Well, he actually was able to... I don't wanna get into his personal situation. But, I mean, you know, I think that there are other examples that, you know, people were able to do. And I've seen them in Princeton where, you know, they have the condo-ization. You know, people have separate units in their homes, which, you know, those are very desirable places, and people do it, and it's fine. Like, it works. And, you know, my uncle's a developer in Chicago. He builds these types of units all the time, you know, where they're sold off, you know, to other people, and they share the ownership. It's two units, three units in a building. It's perfectly fine. It works all over the country. It'll work here in Princeton.
It works next door to me. The duplex next door has been a condo for more than 50 years. And if there's been disagreement among the owners, it's never been visible. It's well-maintained. So, yeah, I agree with that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Mr. Oakman? Did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to just say, like, you know, one of the things I'm struggling with, and I think I'm hearing it in some of the comments from my colleagues on the board, is that... Is that, I mean, in some ways, like, the question about, "Is this consistent with the master plan?" Like, it comes down to... It does come down to what's gonna result from this, because in some ways, you know, as Mia said, like, we already have... We already have the ability to do ADUs that are owned by the primary landowner. And so, you know, what this is doing is changing the ownership opportunity structure. And so, the question really is, you know, yes, I think that... I support the goals of this, and I think accessible dwelling units, you know, would create... I mean, do create different types of, you know, size units and price point units in some cases in town. And... But the question is like, is this gonna do more of that? Or is this gonna do that more effectively because of the different ownership structure? And that's what I think I'm struggling with, and I think others are as well. You know, we... There is a... I mean, I think there is a valid concern that if this is adding value to pieces of property that might otherwise be teardowns anyway, that you're essentially, you know, you're raising the kind of... You're raising the base price that a developer is gonna be willing to pay for a piece of property that they can tear down and create two units on instead of one. And I think it's that base developer price for buying land in this town that does drive prices up and make, you know, make it such that a lot of middle-income families can't really move here. So, I think there's that. I think there's nothing about this fundamentally that will create more affordable housing than the ADU program we have currently. And so, if what we're looking at is, you know, the master plan... In the master plan, it says we wanna create more affordable housing. Will this create more affordable housing than just having the ADUs that are owned with, you know, that are in co-ownership with the other property? I don't know that I believe that is true. And I don't know that we can say for certain that that's the case. And so, that's sort of what I struggle with, even though I believe that ADUs are, you know, a good idea for diversifying housing here. I just don't know if the different ownership structure specifically is gonna do a better job of meeting the goals of the master plan than would be done without it.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't think the question is so much creating a lot of affordable housing as the diversity/missing-middle housing. And unfortunately, missing middle and affordable aren't necessarily the same thing. I mean, no. But to David's example earlier of a teardown rebuild versus the creation of an ADU and the relative price points of those, you know, three dwellings was well-taken.
But, again, it is, except that I don't... I mean, I don't know that you're better off with this type of approach than you are with co-ownership, because I think if you had... I mean, you can make the argument that if you have accessible dwelling units that are created by or for the ownership by the person who's owning the primary structure, they might be a lower price point than what David's talking about, because they wouldn't necessarily be, you know, sort of like, you know, brand-new, like, you know, nice finishes. If a developer puts it together, a developer is gonna make both of these units create as much value for the developer as possible. And so, if what this change is doing is adding to the ADU options that you can have developers building ADUs, then you're gonna be creating units that are adding value first to the developers.
Good point.
I can comment on it.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I just have two quick questions. I'm seeing more and more questions coming into Q and A, and I don't believe that we've officially closed public comment yet. That's one thing. The second thing is, you know, I'm sure that going forward, you know, in some cases, this will work; in other cases, it won't. In some cases, you know, in some neighborhoods, it will work; in other cases, it won't. My fear is that we end up in development situations where we end up with two slightly less unaffordable houses rather than truly affordable missing-middle houses. And there's nothing in this amendment that we have to vote on tonight that really addresses that. And that's, you know, that's just a concern that I have.
Okay, to the question of the public comment, are the... I'm gonna look at the Q and A myself.
We already determined that people have to give comment orally if they wanna give public comment.
We did. We did. And that is a separate question, I think, from answering a question. Now, there was... I saw a question from Yaina Moore that had to do with subdividing lots. That was actually a question that was asked and answered early on in a simple way. And so, I don't wanna reopen public comment and rehash things. And I thought I had made clear that we were gonna close public comment after Mr. Bunting, but then I did not formally do it, so that's my bad. I apologize for that. But if there are some... If there are questions in the Q and A that we can address, I'd like to do that, but I do not want to reopen public comment and have people give another set of comments who have already spoken.
Yeah, it's... There are no questions. It's expressions of opinion.
Okay. Ms. Sacks? Did you wanna say something? I saw your...
I...
Your screen lit up.
I actually just wanna know... I know we have another hearing, and I just wanna know, are we... Is... Are we... Will we end at 11:00 tonight regardless?
Yes, we will end at 11:00. Are there any members of the board who haven't expressed a view that would like to? Okay, saying none. Are... Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to find this ordinance consistent with the master plan or some other motion?
I don't know if it's appropriate for me as a council member, but if Jerry says it's okay, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, it's okay. It certainly is okay.
I would like to have the board recommend this is consistent with the master plan back to council. And I don't feel like... I've heard concerns, but I haven't heard any concrete suggestions of any other modifications or similar qualifications that would be supported by the whole board. So, I'm just gonna move it simply as to find it consistent with the master plan.
And I'll second the motion.
Can I just comment on that real quick?
Yes.
Sorry, Louise. I mean, and I'm not necessarily suggesting this, and I don't even think that we are supposed to be suggesting policy changes. But, I mean, you know, David, to your point, one of the things, you know, one thing that could be done, for example, would be to... Would be to limit significantly by saying that, you know, you're allowed to sell... You're allowed to sell the accessible dwelling unit in an instance where it is also being deed-restricted for affordable housing. So, for example, you could sell it to a nonprofit or the housing authority that could put, you know, that could put a, you know, a Section 8 housing voucher on it, which would make it affordable to somebody, you know, at a certain income level. I mean, that would be... Again, I'm not suggesting we do it, but if we really want this to create affordable housing, I mean, that's a way you could do it.
Well, as Ms. Wilson said, this is really more about missing middle, not about affordable housing from the perspective of the group that's been working on it. And I really would like to request that if people have amendments that they would like to make, that they should make them. But I'm trying to truncate the conversation a little bit so we can get to the other application.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And I will ask Carrie to call the roll and invite people, if you'd like, to explain your vote. I don't mean to go on and on about it, but if there are things, you know, quick comments that you want to make, put your vote in context, then that's not a bad thing to have on the record. So, Carrie, would you?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Capizoli? Yes, I support it to go to council, but I do think more discussion needs to happen on, you know, various complications that could arise. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
With the comment that I do think it changes neighborhood character, and I do think that this is changing the original intent of what ADUs were for, and we don't know what's gonna... You know, we sort of open up, in a sense, a Pandora's box with those reservations, and I think council needs to look at them. I'll vote yes.
Louise, if I may? I think we're at the end of this vote. We're not gonna really know where we are, because everybody will have voted yes on the consistency, and then some people have suggested comments. Maybe we can segregate out the comments and vote separately on those.
Well... We can do that if the board wants to, but I...
I object to that. I specifically asked...
Yeah.
I specifically asked for amendments if anyone wants to make them. I suggested any amendments. I think Ms. Wilson encouraged people to just explain their votes, and I think that's fine, but I don't think that it's worthy of separate action by the board.
Okay, so let's say we finish, and everybody votes yes, and we have Mr. McGowan's comment. Is that a comment that will be included in the report that Michael's gonna prepare for the council? That's what's not clear to me.
My assumption was that that comment would be reflected in the minutes, that it is not something that the motion itself is a simple one, consistent or not consistent.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay, I mean, that clarifies it if that's what we wanna treat it, and that's fine with me.
I think Michael does a really good job of summarizing, you know, the concerns that people have. And I doubt there's gonna be any comment right here... people have. And I doubt there's going to be any comment right here that is new. I think the concerns are, you know, fall into clusters. And Michael, can you take it upon yourself to do a thorough summary of the concerns that were raised here?
Yeah, I think we can certainly put some language to give context to the board's decision and its discussion this evening. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes, I'll vote that it's inconsistent with the master plan. But I do...I mean, I appreciate Michael and Mia suggesting that, you know, the clear concerns that have been raised here outside of that purview, you know, get conveyed to council. So thank you.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, it is consistent with the master plan.
Mr. Quinn?
On consistency with the master plan only and with an appeal to the plaintiff in the case against the municipality to pause the litigation to allow for public education on this issue. I know I sound like a convention speech now. I would say yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes, I do vote for it being consistent with the master plan. I guess I'll just second what I commented on earlier, that I think that, you know, it's impossible to really say, you know, if the council, you know, chooses to have some experts testify on it, I think that might be interesting. But, you know, I think it will be a benefit to the town.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes, and I am grateful to everybody for all the time and thought and ideas and concerns that have been expressed. And I encourage all of the participants who are still watching and listening to express your views to council when they consider this on Monday night.
What about Mr. Chow? He's a regular member, correct?
No, he's an alternate.
Oh, he's an alternate? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chow, you got to listen, but...okay.
We have two resolutions, and we have an application.
That's right. Resolution Nelson Spring LLC, review of satisfaction of condition of prior approval. This is on Spring Street, block 27.04, lot 20, file number P1917-487PD. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call or...
I think it should be a roll call.
Okay, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
The next resolution is trustees of Princeton University Solar Array. This was a minor site plan with variance for a solar array on Elm Drive and Faculty Road, block 45.01, lot 101, file number P202...sorry, P2020-829PM. Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Good. I'll second.
Moved by Mr. McGowan, seconded by Ms. Capizoli. Roll call, please.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a hearing. And I want to start by thanking Ms. Brown and your professionals for your patience. This is a minor subdivision, 145 Ewing Street, block 31.05, lot 86, file P2020-856MS. This is MLUL 8920. I'm not sure what that part means. But anyway, formal action, we do expect to take tonight, although we very much want to conclude this meeting by 11:00. So with that, Michael, do you want to dive in?
Yeah.
Michael, before you start...
Oh, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Muller.
Do you think... Proof of publication and service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction. And Michael, if you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
All right. Well, this is a very interesting subdivision application. I think that both the board and the public will agree when I give you a little overview. It's a minor subdivision application, as the chair stated, 145 Ewing Street, which is in the R3 residential zone of the former borough. The property in question is located on the northwesterly corner of Ewing Street and North Harrison Street. It currently...it's a little under half an acre. It's .433 acres. And the proposal is to divide it into two conforming lots. And what's interesting is that there is an 18th century farmhouse, a former house, I mean, farmhouse from the 18th century. It's been dated to at least have been constructed as early as 1755. And the initial thought was to subdivide the property and clear the property of the existing structures and make it ready for two new homes, one in each lot. And I must say, and I want to give credit to the applicant for working with staff and being very sensitive to the concerns of some members of the neighborhood who voiced their concerns, that there was why...there was consensus that this historic structure, although not a locally designated landmark and having legal protection under that designation, was still a significant part of Princeton's history. And long and the short of it is, what we have for you this evening, you'll hear the presentation from the applicant, is a subdivision that retains the existing house. The house will be preserved and actually expanded for uses of duplex, and then a new single-family home is proposed for the second lot that will be created. So that to cut down on redundancy in terms of comments, I'll hand it to the applicant to do their presentation. And then I'm certainly happy to answer any questions of the board in terms of the process and negotiation that went on to arrive at this very, I think, positive solution in terms of the subdivision application.
Thank you very much. Who among the applicant's professionals do we have up on our screens here? I'm sorry that I see Mr. Falcone, I see Mr. Tar, I see Ms. Brown. Mr. Tar, are you...Mr. Muller, would you swear in? Mr. Tar, are you going to take it from the top, Mr. Tar?
Well, I'm not going to swear on Mr. Tar because he's in the turnip, and you don't swear. They always tell the truth.
Thank you, Jerry. That's very kind of you.
You were ready for that line.
Thank you for that comic relief, Jerry.
Our only witness...
I am just, like, mangling my way through this meeting.
All right, madam. We have only one witness, Frank Falcone. If he could be sworn, that would be just fine, Jerry.
Okay, good. Thank you.
If you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Frank J. Falcone.
Would you give me control of the screen so that I can put the slides up?
You have it.
Okay.
And as Chris is doing that, we're going to mark electronically, that is, in my notes, that this exhibit, which I believe is seven slides, will be exhibit A1.
Thank you. So, by the way, Frank is, of course, a licensed surveyor and a professional planner in New Jersey, has testified before this board many times, and I believe quite recently, with respect to a minor subdivision on Locust Lane. So I'm hoping that the board is willing to accept him as an expert in those two fields.
I hope after sitting here for two hours, you do.
Yeah, you've learned something, Frank.
Got a good planning lesson today.
So as this cover, the sheet indicates, this is a minor subdivision with no variances, and that...
Chris, we're not seeing it yet.
Not seeing it quite yet. Thanks.
Ryan? I apologize. Obviously, I can see it, and I had share screen on, so we're coping here.
So when you click on the share screen button, do you see a whole range of windows to choose from?
No, to tell you the truth, when I put the slide up, I don't get the share button again. So I'm trying to undo what I did.
We have a comment here that says, Ryan Kennedy here as backup to do the slides if there's a problem.
Yeah, Ryan, can you pop on? You want to share the screen with Ryan Kennedy?
I will bring him in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Can you...I don't see the screen yet.
I can see it. Can others see it as well?
I can see it. I can see it.
Okay, well, I'm going to go by memory, because I want to keep moving here, with apologies.
Chris, go back to Zoom. Go back to your Zoom window, and you'll see it.
Yep, I did. Quite all right. So we're going to go to the second slide. And this is a copy of the zoning map, as was pointed out by Michael.
Not so much. There we go. Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
The second slide shows that the property is in the R3 zone. Go to the third slide. Frank, would you describe the property in relation to the other uses that exist on the block in which it sits?
Okay, we're looking at the north Harrison Street and Ewing Street, the northwest corner. Highlighted in red, lot 86 is the property in question. You could see the house in the lower left-hand corner. Can't hear you.
You're fading, Frank.
Is this better?
That's better.
Okay, I was too close to my computer, I think. You have a detached garage, sort of in the center of the lot, large driveway between some landscape features in the central, I'll say, northeast corner. As you can see from the map, there are...the entire block really consists of multifamily housing. There's...to the west, there's apartment houses; to the north, at the other corner there, there's apartment houses. And basically, everything's multifamily. So we can go to the next one, Chris. This is a survey that we did. I called it Plan of Existing Conditions. Again, you see the house in the lower left-hand corner, quite close to Ewing Street, the large driveway, and the detached garage closer to Harrison Street. The site is sort of steep from the northwest corner to the intersection with Harrison Street. Everything's basically brainstormed.
Frank, we're losing your sound a bit.
Okay, I think I keep getting too close to the computer. Okay. Again, I was commenting about the topography. It kind of slopes from the northwest corner towards Harrison Street. We go to the next one. Okay, this is the real crux of the subdivision. Again, you see the structure that we're trying to retain. That's on proposed lot 8601. The minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet for a duplex. We've made this lot 10,741, so it does conform. Proposed lot 8602, the minimum lot size for a single is 7,200 square feet. This lot is 8221, so it's about 1,000 square feet larger than it has to be. The existing detached garage will be removed, as well as the shed in the upper northeast corner of the property. Due to the proximity of the house to Ewing Street, Ewing Street is a variable with right-of-way, a 10-foot-wide sidewalk and utility easement is being proposed in lieu of any kind of dedication. Again, any kind of dedication would put the right-of-way line very close to the house. So I believe this is the better solution for the property. Not sure, Chris, you got more there? What this exhibit shows is that the zoning for the duplex lot, specifically for the duplex lot, I believe the next slide shows the zoning for the single-family lot. And the charts indicate that everything meets the bulk requirements of the zone. I have reviewed the memos by the township professionals prepared by Derek Bridger and Mr. Purcell. We have no issues complying with the comments in the memo. I'll let Ms. Brown talk about the sidewalk issue. I'm not going to commit her to that without her permission. What has happened is the town has asked for a sidewalk extending from Harrison Street across the entire frontage on Ewing Street.
Frank, could you put the site plan back on, the subdivision plan, I mean, just so we could be...
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Thanks.
Yeah, the sidewalk, again, there's a proposed 10-foot-wide sidewalk and utility easement, and that sidewalk would go along the right-of-way line of Ewing Street. Yeah, in that area.
And actually, staff had recommended that the sidewalk be close to the curb to pull it away from the historic house.
Yeah, that was a question of mine, and I'm kind of glad you decided to keep it against the curb and give a little more lawn area between the sidewalk and the house.
Right.
Plus, it's a little steep in that area. There's sort of an embankment along the front. So I think that would be the better location. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Since we are in the, you know, shared screen mode, I can't see if anyone is raising their hand to ask a question. So I'll just ask that you...if anybody does have a question, that you'll just announce yourself and pose your question. Oh, there we go.
I don't have a question, but I just want to add my thanks to the applicant for their flexibility in bringing this application that preserves the existing historic building. I really appreciate that willingness.
I'd also like to say the same thing. I know the HBC really appreciates it, and we appreciate the neighborhood concern as well.
Thank you both. Any...
If I could just add to the kudos there. I've...a friend, when I first moved to Princeton, If I could just add to the kudos there, I've, a friend, when I first moved to town, a friend pointed to the house and talked about its rich literary history and the number of famous authors who had visited there. And it's quite impressive, and it would have been a shame to see the house where so many great literary minds came together in Princeton wind up as a tear down, so thank you.
Yes. Any questions for the applicant?
We have two hands raised from the public, if you're ready for the public hearing, or?
Yes.
Okay. First one is Joe Ammon.
Yes, thank you, that's Amon Amon.
I think you need to be sworn, Joe.
If you could raise your right hand, I don't see your image. Can we get Joe's image on the screen, or we cannot, David?
I can't do it, but Joe can do it.
No, I don't have an option.
Raise your right, in any event, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, and please state your full name.
Joe Amon Amon.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, I live at 202 Ewing Street, just up the street. And, you know, I want to first sort of say, I appreciate the efforts to try and retain this house. I had a couple of concerns, though. One was that the testimony that was given earlier suggested that the block that this house is on is full of multi-unit housing. In fact, that's actually not the case at all. Other than the garden apartments, which are non-conforming use on the block, every other house is either a one-story or one-and-a-half-story or two-story home. In the specific first section of Ewing Street off of Harrison, there are three homes facing the specific house in question. All of them are one- or one-and-a-half-story houses. As you turn the corner until you get to Franklin Street, there are five homes that are one- or one-and-a-half-story, and three homes that are two-story. When you go further past Franklin Street, they're 19 houses that are one- or one-and-a-half-story, and there are nine houses that are two-story. What we didn't see in the presentation was the elevation that's proposed for the house, which is a three-story flat roof addition with a deck on the third story on the back of a historic 1755 house. That kind of swallows the house, and particularly is imposing on the street, because, as was mentioned, the sidewalk is right on the curb and the house is right off of the sidewalk. My concern is that, you know, a duplex is much more in character with the houses that are across from it on Harrison, that are next door to it on Harrison. And what you're proposing essentially is increasing the non-conforming use of the neighborhood that's existing, which is very modest, one-story, one-and-a-half-story, and two-story houses. And, you know, I feel like in saving this house, what you've done is basically created this three-story addition duplex off the back that swallows the historic nature that's on the street side. And I think there has to be a better solution to this in terms of thinking about how flexible to create two lots for this, to have this open to Harrison instead of being imposed upon Ewing Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amon.
And the second member of the public is Steve. I think it might be Steve Hiltoner, but he should identify himself when he...
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Steve Hiltoner, H.I.L.T.N.E.R.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say I was, as one of the people who raised questions about what was going to happen to this parcel, I was, you know, very pleased to find out that the house was going to be saved. Definitely want to thank Michael Laplace and the current owner for working something out that's possible. I won't speak to the size of the buildings that are being considered. You know, we certainly do have fairly modest houses in this area, and so I won't, but I have no particular opinion one way or the other on that, I haven't really studied it. But I'm very happy that the building is, the historic building is going to be saved, and I'm very interested in the history of it, and would like to suggest the possibility of saving. There's a gazebo behind it in the garden, and also, the shed may date back quite a ways. And I want to say that I lead the group, the Friends of Herentown Woods, which has been taking care of Herentown Woods, Princeton's first nature preserve since we started taking care of it in 2013 and renovated it. And we've been creating a botanical garden there, and we actually do need a shed. And we love to have various objects, various structures that have history behind them, and that's why we've been working to save the Bevlin House and cottage there. And I think we could perhaps utilize the gazebo as well, which I assume would be, have to be demolished in order to make the expansion of the one parcel behind, the building behind the historic house. And I've been told that it's made of teak and mahogany, and it has a new roof of cedar jingle, and it sounds like quite a quality structure. And we would like to see if, ask permission of the owner whether we could assess whether the logistics of moving it out to Herentown Woods. And of course, we'd seek permission from the town for that as well, and the shed. So I'm asking permission of the owner to assess the shed and the gazebo with the potential of saving them and putting them to a useful public purpose so that they could be enjoyed in their history, their story could be told. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hiltoner. Is that a question that we want to try to settle this evening? Mr., well, I guess Ms. Brown could speak to that, or Mr. Tar? I'm not sure who to punt that to, that question.
Yes.
So Ms. Brown, you're agreeing that they can, that they can take...
Let me swear her in first, if I could.
Sure, yes.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name.
Brooke Brown, B.R.O.W.N.
So is Mr. Hiltoner talking that that is going to be removed, the gazebo?
Yes.
And it's okay with you if Friends of Herentown Woods would like to take it?
And the same with the shed?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
I have one more hand up from the public. Herb Foster.
Mr. Foster, come right ahead.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Herbert Foster, F.O.S.T.E.R. I live on 198 Ewing Street, which faces the, at the other end of the block, the property in question. Looking at the plans, it looks like whatever is, is a sort of a monstrosity looming over the old farmhouse. And it's really seemed to be out of character in the neighborhood. And so, it's because, as I say, it looks, it looks like it looms over the poor, seven, old house. That was my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Louise, it's Chris Tar, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
I apologize, I lost internet, and I've been listening this way and that, but I'm back, so I apologize. Yeah. I did hear Mr. Foster's comment, so I didn't mean to interrupt him, but we could, go ahead.
Okay, did you also hear the exchange with Mr. Hiltoner and his...
Yeah, that was delightful, that's just fine. No legal, no legal issues there, Louise.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cohen, are there any other...
No more hands up.
You said no more, I'm sorry.
No more.
Okay, then we'll close the public comments section of the hearing. Are there comments or questions from board members?
Just wanted to say there are two Q&amp;A questions that may be open. One from Mary Cassard, and the other one from Mr. Amon.
Well, they should appear, and obviously, Mr. Amon's already sworn in. Has his question already been answered?
It has not, he was asking if the elevation of the building could be presented as well.
I would like to speak to that. With a minor subdivision which conforms, even one that has an interesting building on it, I think not only for this applicant, but for many other applicants who've come before you, it is not appropriate to look at the architecture of any of the buildings that go on those two lots. If we were to get down that rabbit hole of criticizing the architecture, you would be way off-base. And I don't mean to be mean-spirited about that, but both the statute and our Supreme Court have told us that if you have a conforming subdivision, you can only look to those things which are required under your ordinance. You do not require that house plans be delivered to you for a minor, and therefore, it's not something to which the board can look at.
And the other question, I don't fully understand, but I'll read it, and if somebody can answer it, that'd be great. It is, if this is not a historical property, why is this an issue? And if it was deemed officially historical property, and the emphasis is on if, where would the proposed building property be in violation?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll grab onto that one. I probably didn't make this clear in my opening remarks. The building is historic in terms of its age, and it, you know, it being a part of the Princeton landscape and the history of this community for centuries. It's not a legally designated and regulatory, you know, under regulations-protected landmark. It just was never formally designated as a landmark, or it's not within a local district. So there's a distinction there. It doesn't have that level of protection under our zoning code.
Former borough which had, oh, sorry, did I, Michael, did you freeze or have you finished?
I was just gonna add that there has been survey work done on it. It has been deemed eligible based on its age and, you know, historical significance. It just was never formally designated, I just wanted to clarify that.
And I wanted to explain that it wasn't formally designated, because the borough only designated areas of land and not single properties, and this was just one single property.
And I should amend my remarks by saying that the checklist for minor subdivisions does have one case in which the house plans are to be submitted to the board, and that is for designated historic structures. So had it been so designated by the borough, then it would have been appropriate to look at the house plans. But it wasn't, and it isn't.
Thank you for that clarification. Other questions, comments?
I would just encourage Ms. Brown, if she's interested, to get the ball rolling on historic designation. She could submit the, you know, her documents to the HBC, where we would have a hearing, then it would go to the planning board, and then it would go to council.
Thank you for that, Ms. Capizoli, any other comments or questions? Or a motion, maybe?
I'll move approval.
Move to approve the subdivision.
I'll second. Second.
Mr. Cohen, move, Mr. Quinn seconded.
And you, do you want me to go with the potential conditions?
Yes, please.
Okay, this would be on the memo by Jim Purcell and Derek on page three extending to page four. 13 recommendations, I gather from what Mr. Falcone said earlier, that you have no objections, the applicant has no objections to any of those, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now also, on the prior page, it indicated at the bottom of the page, staff suggested the applicant propose a 10-foot-wide sidewalk and utility easement as opposed to dedication of land to expand the right-of-way. Now, that seems...
That's shown on Frank's drawings, and it's acceptable.
That's, oh, that's already shown in the drawings?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the only other condition would be that the applicant is going to basically work with the Herentown Woods people and give them the opportunity to assess the two structures, the gazebo and the shed, and to move them if they deem it appropriate.
Acceptable.
That's it for the conditions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I neglected to ask if any of the other professionals wanted to weigh in, like Mr. Purcell or Ms. Stockton on anything that were in other memos, but I gather that we're all good? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, we've gone over the conditions. I think we're ready for roll call, Carrie.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes. And I should note, too, that Mr. Quinn put, I think in the chat box, that a link to a history of the property, is that right?
It's a literary history of the...
Oh, literary history.
Gives you an idea of who was in the house, but not what they were doing.
Is it your chat box, if you want to click on that thing? Okay.
Thank you very much, my heart stopped when I lost you my internet connection. I'm glad to be back.
I'll just...
I associate Ms. Brown, thank you.
Ms. Brown, thank you so very much for taking the extra time to make this happen and work with the town, and other people have said thank you. I just want to add mine as well.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
And I guess Mr. Hiltoner will probably be in touch with you directly about those structures. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Anything else, board members or staff?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, all.
Thank you all very much.
Bye now.
Bye.